Okay, somebody needs that.
I'd like to call for the city council meeting for Monday, September 11th, 2023. We have 20 items for original consideration. The clerk will please read item number one.
Item number one for original consideration, an ordinance approving and authorizing the supplemental bond ordinance in the amount of twenty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-five, or twenty-five million two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the North Ferry Street pump station.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two for original consideration, a resolution calling for a public hearing of the 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three for original consideration, a resolution calling for a public hearing of the proposed 2024 operating budget and the capital budget for the city of Schenectady.
Discussed in committee without objection and on consent. Item number four.
Item number four for original consideration, a resolution authorizing acceptance of funding from the New York State for the purchase of a new fire truck.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five for original consideration, a resolution referring the draft ordinance establishing a six-month moratorium on the submission and processing of building permits, certificates of occupancy, certificates of use and land use approvals for smoke shop, vape shops and tobacco or vape consumption businesses within the city of Schenectady to the Schenectady County Economic Development and Planning Department.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six for original consideration, a resolution authorizing an easement to Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation, DBA National Grid, for the installation of an overhead electrical service in Central Park for the new pool, splash pad and ancillary facilities.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven for original consideration, a resolution amending Resolution 2023-029 to modify the time period for Miracle on Craig Street to secure required financial commitments.
Roll call by Mr. Palamini. Item number eight.
Item number eight for original consideration, a resolution amending Resolution 2022-224 to modify the time period for Young Women's Christian Association of Schenectady, DBAYWCA Northeastern New York, to secure required financial commitments.
Roll call by Mr. Palamini. Item number nine.
Item number nine for original consideration, a resolution amending Resolution 2022-024 or 224 to modify the time period for Electric City Food Cooperative Incorporated to secure required financial commitments.
Roll call by Mr. Palamini. Item number 10.
Item number 10 for original consideration, a resolution amending Resolution 2022-224 to modify the use of funds for Schenectady Community Action Program Incorporated.
Roll call by Mr. Palamini. Item number 11.
Item number 11 for original consideration, a resolution revoking the appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the Stockade Association of New York, Schenectady, New York, for a revitalization project as authorized by Resolution 2022-224 Act funds for this revitalization project as authorized by Resolution 2022-224.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 12.
Item number 12 for original consideration, a resolution revoking the appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for Proctors reopening safety upgrades as authorized by Resolution 2022-224.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 13.
Item number 13 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 405 11th Street for twenty-six thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
Roll call by Mr. Palamini. Item number 14.
Item number 14 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 874 Emmett Street for fifty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and eleven cents.
Roll call by Mr. Palamini. Item number 15.
Item number 15 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1005 Congress Street for twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ten cents.
Roll call by Mr. Palamini. Item number 16.
Item number 16 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1040 Wendell Avenue for sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Roll call by Mr. Palamini. Item number 17.
Item number 17 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1038 Glenwood Boulevard for thirty-five thousand five hundred.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 18.
Item number 18 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Nicholas Fazio.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 19.
Item number 19 for original consideration, a resolution recognizing the Junior League of Schenectady and Saratoga Counties.
This item will be taken out of order and presented by Mr. Palamini. Item number 20.
Item number 20, under Contract and Supply, a resolution awarding the bid and contract for the 2023 Harley-Davidson Police Motorcycle to Brunswick Harley-Davidson Incorporated in the total amount of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. If there's nothing more to come before the City Council Caucus, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Patrick. Seconded by Mr. Turo. All those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order for Monday, September 11th, 2023. And I'd like to call on Reverend James Conneke for the prayer invocation.
Let us begin our evening on this solemn day, this 22nd anniversary of the attacks of September 11th, 2001, in a moment of silence. September 11th is a day of remembrance. On this solemn anniversary, pause to remember the many people who died in New York, Virginia and Pennsylvania because of terrorist attacks. Recall the trauma and heartbreaking events that occurred that day and pray for those who lost their lives and those that continue to suffer. We turn to you then, Lord, for the help we need. Give us hearts that seek to love all people regardless of race, religion or nationality. Strengthen our hands to do the work that lasting peace requires. Help us to trust in you. You are changeless and look after our needs. We listen to these words from the prophet Isaiah. "We have a strong city. He appoints walls and bulwarks for..." "Open the gates that the righteous nation may enter, the one who remains faithful." "You will keep him in perfect peace, whose mind is stayed on you because he trusts in you." "Trust in the Lord forever, for he is God, the Lord. We have an everlasting rock. The way of the righteous is smooth. Oh, upright one, make the path of the righteous level. Amen."
I'd like to call on Councilmember Detera for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, could please read, call the roll.
Mr. Mutuverin is absent. Ms. Detero?
Here.
Mr. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Williams is absent. Ms. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Palamini?
Here.
Ms. Porterfield?
Here. We have one out-of-order resolution recognizing the Junior League of Schenectady and Saratoga Counties, and I call on Mr. Palamini to present this resolution.
May I have the floor?
You have the floor.
This is a resolution to recognize the Junior League of Schenectady and Saratoga Counties. Whereas the Association of Junior Leagues International is a global women's civic leadership organization that was founded in 1901 by Mary Harriman with the support of Eleanor Roosevelt. And whereas the Junior League of Schenectady and Saratoga Counties, JLSS, was founded in 1932 by a group of Schenectady women, including Catherine S. or Kay Rosendahl. And whereas JLSS has worked for more than 91 years to build a better community by launching lasting impactful community programs such as Operation Back to School, Kids in the Kitchen, Discreet Dignity, Community Hospice, The League Room at Proctors, Dominion House, Court Appointed Special Advocates and Children's Grieving Center at Haven. And whereas the Junior League of Schenectady and Saratoga Counties is helping lead the efforts with AJLI to launch the inaugural Find the Good Day on September 14th, 2023. And whereas Find the Good Day is a special day of unity and compassion that aims to spread kindness, uplift others and inspire positive change across the capital region and the nation. And whereas Find the Good Day is an opportunity for individuals, families and organizations to come together as change makers and create a ripple effect of positivity throughout our community. It is a day to reflect on the goodness within ourselves and find inspiration in the acts of kindness we have witnessed and participated in throughout the year. And whereas the Junior League of Schenectady and Saratoga County invites everyone to make a difference on this significant day. Whether it is through acts of service, volunteer initiatives, or simply spreading positivity through kind gestures, every contribution has the power to create lasting change. And whereas the Junior League of Schenectady and Saratoga Counties is honoring Mohawk Honda as their first Find the Good awardee for their commitment to the Junior League's mission. And whereas Mohawk Honda serves as a valuable partner to dozens of community-based organizations throughout the region and has provided valuable resources and support to the Junior League's Operation Back to School and Discreet Dignity programs. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Schenectady and the City Council and Mayor Gary R. McCarthy pause in their deliberations to encourage all Schenectadians to celebrate Thursday, September 14th, as the Junior League of Schenectady and Saratoga Counties Find the Good Day and encourage all residents to find the good in our community. I'd like to move this.
I'd like, need a second, please. Seconded by Ms. Patrick. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The councilman just said, would you like to speak so I don't have to? I know that was like a Hall of Fame level of words there, but thank you very much to Councilman Palamini, to Mayor McCarthy, who has always been a trusted and good friend to the Junior League of Schenectady and to the entire City Council. What an honor this is for us. This is our first ever Do the Good Day and we thought no better way than to try to launch it here in the City Council chambers. So thank you all very, very much for your ongoing support of our community programs and of our organization. Thank you.
Two, three. Yeah, six, six, I need you all. For health sales. Six, seven, eight. Got it. Thank you. Thank you. If the clerk, I'd like to ask for approval of the minutes of August 28th, 2023. Moved by Mr. Farley. Seconded by Mr. Turo. All in favor? Aye. If the clerk would please read any communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, September 11th, 2023. Under official, there were none. Under general, there was an email from P.D. Boris stating that some people are allowed to speak while others are not. The continuous word of the use marginalized and her feelings of betrayal regarding the public's costs and why her social security retirement was cut by 45%. Under petitions, there were none.
Thank you. This time we have privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, and I have two people signed up to speak. First, Julie Wrightmeyer from the Capital District Tobacco Free Coalition.
Good evening. I'm the director for the Capital District Tobacco Free Communities, and I just wanted to share some information. I know you are considering some work with smoking vape shops in the city. So I just wanted to share some information that's new. I know that you know that there's more tobacco and vape retailers in neighborhoods with the lowest income. And we know that this leads to health disparities. Years, a year or so back, we presented some information from neighborhood conversations that we had. We know that those with less education and less income smoke at much higher rates. The state rate right now for tobacco use is about 12%. Those with education, with low education, with just a high school education, smoke at a rate of about 19.4%. Those with incomes less than 25,000 smoke at 20.4%. And those with mental distress are at about 19%. So we know that there's these health disparities that occur. We also know that tobacco retailers are not evenly spread throughout the city and the county. We know that municipalities can do things to address these health disparities. They can change how their city looks, and I know you all are very, you know, very well aware of that. So by implementing policies that can limit the time, place and manner of tobacco sales. And there's about 19 communities so far across New York State that have done licensing, zoning, have done things to limit where tobacco and vape retailers are. The city of Syracuse is the most recent one. Just last week, they unanimously passed a resolution to have licensing for all their tobacco and vape retailers. And with that licensing, you, they will not be allowed to have tobacco or vape retailer within 750 feet of a school, of a public park or of another tobacco retailer or vape retailer. And they also will have a process with that licensing. For every two that close, only one will be provided. So ultimately, the total number in the city of Syracuse will go down. So I just wanted to share that information with you and let you know that if you have any questions, you can always reach out to us. We have a wonderful piece that goes through how municipalities can address their vape shops, their smoke shops and the like. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Carol DeLamar from the Stockade Association.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Carol DeLamar and I am Chair of the Preservation Committee for the Stockade Association. I wanted to, I'm here to comment on item number 11 on the agenda, which has to do with the revoke, revoking of the ARPA funds that were originally awarded to the Stockade Association for a revitalization project. What I want to make sure everyone is aware of is that revitalization project is for the historic pumps, North Ferry Street Pump Station. I see on the agenda, there's also the $25 million bond for the new building. That new building bond does not include any funds for the preserving, protecting, revitalizing, making use of the historic pump station. So, but I want you to know that this, the Stockade Association fully supports the money returning to the city because it is a city-owned building, property. And while the Stockade Association has been very active in, in pursuing and making recommendations about this building, we aren't in a position to do any work within, within that. So I want to make that, want to make that clear. And, but since the initial award was made back in September 2022, the Stockade Association Preservation Committee has been meeting with the city staff about how this, how to carry this project forward. We are aware that city staff has begun discussions with an outside consultant to create bid documents for exterior maintenance work, restoring the historic windows in that building and for any of the exterior sort of repair of the stucco and all of that stuff. The intent was, that was coming out of the 750,000. But the other part of this need is for an evaluation of the interior of this, of this building. Because in order to, in order, in order to fulfill sort of the feasibility of the reuse of that building that was spelled out in a, in a report two years ago through technical assistant grant from the Preservation League that the city got, it required quite a bit of work in understanding what needed to be done on the inside. So I want to, so a lot of those tasks are outlined in that report that the city generated two years ago. So, so back in March, the Stockade Association Preservation Committee worked with the Development Office to secure a grant from the Preservation League to create a building condition report on the interior of that building. The funds did not come to the city for that, but we feel even though that, 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 that fund, $34,000 should come out of the 750,000 so we can move this project along. The purpose of the condition report was to create planning documents because this is an extraordinary detailed project. And so I want to make sure that that is on, clearly on the agenda of the people that are, that are working on this at the city level. It's a $34,000 grant proposal that was received by Preservation, from Preservation Architects, It's a $34,000 grant proposal that was received by Preservation Arch, from Preservation Architects, who did the original reuse feasibility study of that, of that property. And we just feel it's like, they're very familiar with the property, and it would be a good use of $34,000 out of the 750 to, to move that project along.
I need you to summarize, please.
Our original proposal and award from the city was to seek funding to repurpose this historic pump station into a community interpretation center, event space, similar to what's in some of our other parks.
I'm sorry, I really hate to interrupt you again, but your time is, I've let you go over your time, so.
Where's the lights for August?
Oh, we don't, I don't know what happened to the lights anymore. I apologize. Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak for, on the public comments on the legislative agenda, so I declare that public comment closed. At this time, I ask for approval of the Legislative Consent Agenda. Motion by Ms. Patrick. Second by Mr. Farley. All in favor? Aye. Okay. We have eight items for roll call. First is item number seven. If the clerk would please read.
Item number seven for original consideration, a resolution amending Resolution 2023-029 to modify the time period for Miracle on Craig Street to secure required financial commitments.
All right. Move, I need a motion to move that, Mr. Palamini. Second by Mr. Turo. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So at this point in time, we'll have the roll call.
Mr. Turo?
No.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Ms. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Palamini?
No.
Ms. Porterfield?
Yes. So the motion fails? Okay. Item number eight.
Item number eight for original consideration, a resolution amending Resolution 2022-224 to modify the time period for Young Women's Christian Association of Schenectady, DBA, YWCA Northeastern New York to secure required financial commitments.
Need a motion to move that? Mr. Palamini to the agenda. Second by Ms. Turo. All in favor? Aye. Roll call? Yes. We need a roll call. Is there any discussion for the roll call? All right.
Mr. Turo?
No.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Ms. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Palamini?
No.
Ms. Porterfield?
Yes. So we need, just for, for the audience, we need at least four votes to pass it, so that motion, that motion also fails. Item number nine. Need a motion to move this? Mr. Palamini? Second by Mr. Turo. All in favor? Aye. Any discussion? The clerk would please read, call the roll.
Mr. Turo?
No.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Ms. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Palamini?
No.
Ms. Porterfield?
Yes. Motion, the item fails. Item number 10. Need a motion to, Mr. Palamini moves it. I need a second. Second by Mr. Turo. All in favor? Aye. Is there any discussion on this item? If the clerk would please call the roll.
Mr. Turo?
No.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Ms. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Palamini?
Want to explain the votes on these last several resolutions, including this one. So I'll speak to this one in particular. We had an ARPA process put in place last year, and quite frankly, it was never followed. We had a review process, asked people to go through the process of taking their, their time and reviewing applications in which we were supposedly going to look over those and talk over them. That never happened. We came together and all of a sudden, money was being doled out. At that time, or shortly later, I should say, a series of contingencies were put in place to actually designate the money to various organizations such as the Schenectady Action, Community Action Program. The contingencies were put in place for basically a year to allow the organizations to meet the requirements to get the money. Some of these organizations came back asking for more time. Others didn't, may not even know that they could do that. There's other applications where the original application has been changed completely from what has been now given money for, or allowed money for. That's not fair to organizations who've put in applications whose funding might not have happened. If you change your application from the initial to the end, you should be put back into the pile and looked at with the entire group. None of that happened. Everything here has been arbitrary. Four months here, six months there. It's completely pulled out of the air. And yes, the organizations asked for some of those, but again, the fairness and, and the process here, following our procedures, just didn't happen. And to those organizations that didn't get funded, you should look into this, seriously. I mean, you, you've been not awarded money. Other organizations were awarded money for a, a proposal that was put in that was completely changed and still allowed the money. This entire ARPA procedure has been screwed up from the start, and it's really troublesome. I understand these resolutions will pass likely in two weeks when other members of the council attend. But the reality is, there's, there's a process that we need to hold to, and we just didn't do that. We didn't even come close. It was just willy-nilly, here's, I like this group, I'm going to give money to that group, and so forth. And just completely arbitrary. So my answer is no.
Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. I'd just like to lend some clarification to the statement that was just made. First of all, there was a process, and let's also keep in mind that during this, all of this, there, things changed, people's timeline changed, things increased. So for people to come for, to ask for an extension, just makes sense for us to consider that and that have this hard and fast rule. The two hard and fast dates that we have are from the, from the federal government, which say by the end of Sept, by the end of 2024, we must have allocated all of the money, and by the end of 2026, all of that money must be spent. One of the things we did with this ARPA was to try to make sure that organizations who don't normally get an opportunity to be funded, or have that opportunity to be funded. And we are working with those organizations. A large amount of the money, as you all know, has gone to the city, and the city has the capacity to do those things. And every council member who sits here today had an opportunity to participate in the process, and if they felt that the process wasn't all they wanted it to be, had the opportunity to, instead of offer criticism, to offer some solutions to the things they thought were not working well. So our staff has been working with the, and we have, our staff has a lot to do, and this is additional on top of what they already do. So our staff has been working diligently with these organizations. And let me also state, these are organizations that have been serving our community for a very long time and doing a very, a lot of, a lot of good work in the community and serving people who really need the help. One thing I've said from the beginning of these COVID funds is, it hap, COVID impacted every single person in this world, not just in this country. So when this money came in, we had discussions about how that money should be spent, and I was very, I feel, felt strongly then, I feel strongly now, that not all of it necessarily had to be spent on city projects, but those organizations who lost funding, lost staff, and did all, all of those things during COVID would have the opportunity to do, move forward the projects that they needed to move forward. So that is what we did. I still feel that we did that properly, and I will vote yes on this. The motion fails. We don't have enough votes. Thank you. Item number 13. Need a motion to move it? Mr. Palamini? Second by Ms. Patrick. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Any discussion on this? Discussion? All right. Then we'll have the vote.
Mr. Turo?
No.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Ms. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Palamini?
No.
Ms. Porterfield?
Yes. Motion fails. Item number... That was number seven, right? Item number 14. That's right. Need a motion? Moved by Mr. Palamini. Second by Mr. Turo. All in favor? Aye. Any discussion on this item? The clerk would please call the roll.
Mr. Turo?
No.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Ms. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Palamini?
No.
Ms. Porterfield?
Yes. The resolution fails. Item number 15. Need a motion to move this to the agenda. Moved by Ms. Patrick. Second by Mr. Palamini. All in favor? Aye. Any discussion on this item? The clerk would please read the roll. Call the roll.
Mr. Turo?
No.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Ms. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Palamini?
No.
Ms. Porterfield?
Yes. And item number 16. Motion by Ms. Patrick. Second by Mr. Palamini. All in favor? Is there any discussion on this item? The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Turo?
No.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick, or Ms. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Palamini?
So just so the, the audience and people watching at home understand, usually housing sales go relatively smoothly, no issues at all. These four are quite different. These houses were foreclosed on by the city, and to me, this sets a very bad precedent. Now, just because we've done something in the past doesn't mean we need to continue doing that. But in this particular case, we're creating an incentive not to pay your taxes. What we have here is four houses that were foreclosed, and I'll speak to this one, on Wendell Avenue, for example, and it went through the foreclosure process. It has started, the city has the property. So now the council has decided that they want to allow the homeowners or some family member the ability to purchase the home back by paying the back taxes, any fees, and $1,000 on top of that. Now, some might say, well, hey, this, this makes the city whole. Well, does it? The fact is, in order to get a foreclosure, it takes, generally speaking, three years. Some of these houses were much longer, certainly because of COVID, that's not the, the problem with the homeowners in this particular case. But during that time, we've always been told that if you pay your taxes, if everybody paid their taxes and did it on time, we'd have a 10% tax cut. So what we have now is people who haven't paid their taxes now having their house financed or lifestyle financed by the city, and that city is paid by the rest of the taxpayers. So as taxpayers, we are now financing the lifestyle, the housing of these individuals who've had their house foreclosed on, because for several years, they didn't pay their taxes. So instead of having extra money, the city had to either borrow, which in case, the city has to pay interest on that, and the rest of the taxpayers, instead of getting additional services or a tax cut, now didn't get any of that because we have a, a number of individuals not paying their taxes. So what we have is the rest of the city financing individuals. The city as, acting as a bank in essence. That's just not right. But it gets better. At least one of the individuals, if not more, wants to sell their house. So now we've acted as essentially a pseudo mortgage company, where we've paid interest, we've not allowed, they didn't pay their taxes, so we've taken that, and they've lived there for free, and now will profit on the sale. Where's the fairness in that to the rest of the city taxpayers? And the other issue is we haven't created any sort of policy. We're doing this without any policy put into place, so therefore, anybody who wants to write a letter in and says, hey, my property taxes, I'm at foreclosure, I had circumstances, you should look at these and allow me to purchase my house back. Well, we have no grounds now to turn those individuals down because we didn't create a policy first. So if the casino decides not to pay their property taxes, or some other business owner and a bunch of property owners, what does that put the financial situation of the city in? It puts us in complete chaos and on the verge of bankruptcy. The argument will be, well, we don't want to create homelessness. That argument holds no water. If these individuals are coming up with the money, whether it's themselves or from somebody else, to pay off the mortgage, the foreclosure costs, then they had money presumably to live elsewhere. Several of these individuals also had opportunities to get help, and they refused. So this is just a bad precedent. It sets a bad example, and it really creates a situation where we're now acting as a bank. And that's just not fair to the rest of the city, and I vote no.
Thank you.
Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. Just want to add some clarity to the statements. First of all, I just want to say there were extenuating circumstances where the individuals who were foreclosed on are not the ones that the property is being sold back to. So I just want to make that 100% clear. And most of them were elderly people, and their families found out the situation they had gotten themselves into. And I will say, I don't want to create a homeless situation for anyone, but especially for elderly people. So I don't think it's beyond reason that a city council would get them all of the taxes back. So it's not as though Mr. Palamini has stated that we're not getting the taxes and they have a free ride. They are paying every dollar that they owe, and we've also asked, added additional money that they have to pay in addition to court costs. So this is not a free ride, and we are not asking taxpayers to pick up the dime for, for individuals. Yes, we did consider these, they came to us, and as I told you, they had extenuating circumstances. They were older people, they didn't do what they should have done, their family found out, didn't want to see their family in the street, and we did take that in consideration, didn't give them any kind of deal or anything like that, just that, but you have to pay every single penny. So we have done this in the past, and Mr. Palamini knows, and he probably voted for yes at the time because there was an extenuating circumstance. So, you know, Mr. Palamini talks about, you know, we the taxpayer, when frankly, Mr. Palamini is now paying his taxes in Rotterdam. So, you know, that's all of us that are here, that are taxpayers as well, are to consider this. So I just wanted the public to know that is, although it sounds like we're asking you to pay something for someone else, we are not. They are asked to pay that. And another thing is, they will never be able to be in this situation again. It is not something that can happen over and over and over again. So we, we, I beg your pardon?
I'll say something.
Okay. No, when, when it's your time, you certainly can. So the, the City Council did decide that to take into consideration the extenuating... So the city council did decide that to take into consideration the extenuating circumstances for these families, and to allow them to retain their property by paying back all of the taxes, not some, not a portion. And in addition to that, they have to pay every closing cost that goes along with it, and there's additional that the city council put with it. So I think that in trying to keep people in their homes, it's a good thing that we're doing. We talk about the shorting housing, excuse me, the housing shortage that we have, and all of those things. So all of that taken into consideration, that we've gone through COVID, people have gone through all of this. Yes, we did allow these people to have these homes returned to individuals, but not the ones that they were foreclosed on. So just want to make that 100% clear. With that, I vote yes. The measure fails, we do not have enough votes to pass it. Thank you. This time, it's privileged of the floor regarding general city business. I have five people who have signed up to speak. Mark and Marge Lequa. I always, I'm not sure if I say that properly.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable City Council. I assumed I'd be coming over here to give thanks to everybody. I'm one of the people, the last one that Mr. Palamini just spoke on, number sixteen. And, you know, when someone's on disability, when someone's not able to pay their things, they're going through a pandemic, and they're living paycheck to paycheck, even less than that, to the point she can't pay for her own diabetic medication. You have to consider people, Mr. Palamini, and the rest of the city council, consider people. You may not have that extenuating circumstance, you've never been there, never felt it, but consider people, have a heart. There's an underbelly in this world, but people are trying to do the right thing. We were scrambling, scrambling, we got the money to pay everything back, plus whatever they added on. So I thought it was going to be congratulatory and thank you to the New Schenectady. But, Mr. Palamini, I really am disheartened to hear what you had to say. You don't consider people, and I hope you do from this point, I pray to God for you. And everyone else, I pray to God for you, to let you open your hearts up. We are Schenectadyans, we've been here for 12 years. And for one small time, when people could not afford to pay their taxes so that they could survive, and you want to throw them out their houses outside, it's not right. I ask you to open your hearts up, open your eyes up and see what's going on in Schenectady. You want to change, you put billboards for New Schenectady, let it be that. There can be policy, there can be precedent, but let it start now. And as our dear president said, these are other people who are stepping in to help the family. It's not that they're abandoning them, we're not saying, forget you, I'm not putting a dime out for you. The taxpayers are not seeing anything. And truly speaking, if you took a whole countywide vote, they would vote in favor, because they don't want to see people on the street. The homelessness, I just came from Texas the other day for a funeral, homelessness all over the country is egregious. But for a place like upstate New York, the place that housed the people, that takes care of people, you need to show that you're here to help the people. I have nothing, you know, else to say, I thank you, I love you all with my heart, and God bless you all, thank you.
Thank you. Ed Levin Jr.?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Chairman Porterfield, council members. I'm here for another council meeting, knowing full well none of you will do anything for me. Criminals are not in the streets, they are in the office and work for the city of Schenectady. Because it is far more important to cover up for the crimes of these three judges that corruptly deprived me of my constitutional rights and committed obstruction of justice in the process. The same crime the mayor is guilty of by not meeting with me and acting on the crimes. I have proven in these meetings, it makes all of you and the mayor complicit after the fact, especially when the mayor keeps my ethic complaints out of the Gazette. The mayor is responsible for the enforcement of the laws in the city of Schenectady and to ensure justice is provided. Kind of hard to do his job when he is covering up for the criminals. Same thing you council members are doing, you all swear an oath to the Constitution. When all of you do nothing, it becomes a conspiracy to deprive me of my constitutional rights. And the mayor is keeping me out of the Gazette, no matter, there are other ways to expose you. I knew before I came to the first meeting, all of you would do nothing for me. What have any of you done for the 1,100 St. Clair's pensioners who have worked 10 to 50 years at St. Clair's? Why would the mayor do anything for me? He has done nothing for the 1,100 innocent workers victimized in Schenectady by the Catholic Church. Has the mayor found some money from the budget? Has the mayor or city council members held a fundraiser, started a GoFundMe, anything? What did you do, have I supposed to say a prayer for? The mayor and city council members want to distance themselves from the criminals and will do nothing for the innocent victims. Maybe because someone will find out the mayor and council members are not here to help, they are only here to cover up and keep it out of the news. You are all part of the problem, not the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Capuano? Hope I didn't really mess it up, too bad.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm here tonight, Tom Capuano, to express my concern about the leaking sanitary sewer pipes that have been contaminating that Hans Groot kill. The levels of bacteria are dangerous for everyone living in the area along that creek. And even more dangerous for those taking drinking water from sources downstream. I attend Sunday services at a church right next to this creek. And our minister shared with us a letter from the city of Schenectady, written several months ago, that reads in part like this, quote, "Sample collecting and testing for the Hans Groot kill will continue through July. The samples will be collected from a selection of storm structures in the watershed area." It goes on to say that MJ Engineering and the city, with closed circuit TV and dye testing, will come up with some answers about where the pollution is coming from. Most significantly, the letter closes like this. I quote, "A report summarizing the results will be prepared and provided to the city in late August 2023," end quote. I've looked on the website, it could be, I just didn't find the results. But if they have come in, I would like to know how to access them. And I urge the city to make those results public. And that way, discussions can begin immediately on how to address the contamination. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Kennedy?
Good evening, everyone. I wish I could come here in better terms, but I can't. First, I could start off with the tax thing, you overheard me say, why not, when you said, well, they can't do it again. Unless I know, unless there's a policy that's been established, then why can't they do it again? But I would like to thank Councilman Palamini for at least looking out for the taxpayers in the city. There's a lot of people out there who can't pay their taxes, they scrim. There's a lot of older elderly people that go out eating, so they make sure that they pay their tax bill, I know a lot of them. So there's a lot of people out there that are hurting. Let's face it, Biden's America is not putting food on the table for many people. So I don't want to hear about, you know, I understand, everybody has to have a heart, and you want to have, you want to do this? Establish a policy, because then everybody can be, not just your friends, your donors, and your buddies. Everybody in the city of Schenectady. So that's what I got to say about that, and we'll deal with the media and the rest of it. By the way, I'm the chairman of the Republican Party. As far as the ARPA money, I want to be very clear, I heard the council president's, I don't know how to describe it, but her...
Remarks?
Her take, no, thank you. I appreciate it, I'm kind of a little remarks fan, I'll give that to you. What we're going to do as a party is we're going to ask for United States Treasury Department to look into your process. I think, again, there's a lot of people have a lot of problems with the way you didn't follow the rating of the things you cherry picked, again, your friends, donors, buddies, people who work on your campaigns, et cetera, et cetera. So we're asking for them to take a look at it, and you can give them your remarks, I'm sure they will enlighten the fellows in DC. Secondly, another issue, it seems like we got a lot of them. I think we can all agree that the emergency communications in the city is essential for the safety of our people. I think when you look at the, our heroes are out there every day, our firemen, our first responders, our officers, our police officers. That is their lifeline many times in a terrible situation, it's also lifeline of our city residents that are in trouble. So when we get reports that Councilman Farley harangued and harassed a city employee responsible for the communications because some car that either he owns or doesn't own, or knows, or whatever car was towed, let me see if I can get this right. Words to the effect, do you know who I am? And then identifies himself as Councilman Demonty Farley. Now, I don't know if these things are true, I could just say the reports that we got from people who've been affected by this. Now, what I would ask for is simply the city do a investigation. You have...
You know Gary who I think about today, Charlie Mills? I used to see him for lunch every once in a while. Great guy, tell you like it is, so I think of him today. I called my congressman three times to Washington office when I was over there in Albany picketing. Never heard from Paul. I didn't really expect to, he's not really good at getting back to veterans. World War II veteran, disabled combat veteran, myself went to try to see him, never could accomplish it. So I hope that, well, he's another darling of the political system. So the only way he'll leave is if he expires, or he decides not to run. Want to read, I got a fan club going, well, it's the same person, two letters, I want to read the letter. I got it Saturday morning, I'll tell you, I get a good chuckle out of it. Keep those letters coming, if you're watching. "Mr. Busy Person Shows Up At Committee Meeting, Council Meeting. Knows, knows nothing issues." Knows nothing, issues are dumb, D-U-M. Well, I'm not so dumb that I don't know that dumb ends with a D. Stay home, nobody cares what you say. Senior center, I got to laugh at this one, the senior centers are open. I probably will run into him there if I was to go, and who knows, you know, you never know what's in your future. So come on down, introduce yourself, now where is 12309? That's a better neighborhood, isn't it? You and somebody here in 12309? That's where it comes from. I'm thinking they're over there in Niskiuna or someplace. But I'm glad they're watching me, and they know where I go when it comes to the meeting. And I'll continue to do it because it's my civic duty, and there's a lot that could be corrected. The only thing is, they need to line up here. Can't do it by myself, an army of one, eh, it's hard to pull off. Thank you, Marion.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. I have no one else signed up to speak for public comment on city business, so I declare this closed. This time, any miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Patrick?
Well, I just wanted to say I'm disappointed that those measures failed this evening. I think that we had quite a lengthy discussion at our committee meetings last week, where we went through all of this. And certainly, we all can disagree on issues. But I also think that as public servants, it's important for us to understand that sometimes you can make arbitrary decisions. I think also we discussed setting policy around the notion of foreclosure. And I'm sure that that discussion will happen in a future committee meeting, I'd like to see that happen. But I think that we all discussed the fact that there were extenuating circumstances with those foreclosures. I think we all understood, and as the gentleman here said, I think we all were trying to have a heart and understand that, you know, like it is, it's not black and white, everything that happens. We talked about the fact that we might have been setting precedent, but we also did say that we needed to make sure that we were, you know, thinking with our hearts, thinking with our heads, but also understanding that we were going to need to have some guidelines going forward, but also have some flexibility as city council people and as public servants. I'm very disappointed about some of the ARPA decisions that failed this evening, especially in light of the fact that one of them in particular is preventing homelessness, another one is preventing food insecurity, another one is working with people who are victims of domestic violence. So I have to also say, I didn't think the process was a good one necessarily, that we followed right from the start of the ARPA funds. But I do think that last week, we put a lot of consideration into these decisions. And again, I can think in one of those instances where the organization itself had actually had to wait so long for us to make a decision that they had actually taken care of what they needed, which was in fact COVID supplies. So in changing their proposal to something that all of us actually voted on for a few weeks ago, to give them money for that very same project, you know, which is going to prevent homelessness. It's just disappointing, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mr. Palamini?
So regards to the foreclosure, certainly, nobody wants to have anyone kicked out of their house. That's absolutely the last resort, and is a horrible situation. But the fact is, we didn't create a policy. It is arbitrary. And without the policy, anyone can now come forward. What do you tell the elderly lady in Hamilton Hill that says to me, John, I have to pay my taxes? You know, I'm struggling, food costs are up, but I'm doing it? The widow, the widower in the North Side, who, John, come look at my property. Look, I'm keeping it up nice, I want the neighborhood to be proud. But I'm struggling too. Or the widow in Bellevue, who, even though it's been years since her husband died, is, at the mere mention of him, cries. And is struggling to pay the bills, but is making sure she pays the mortgage. We have to consider those individuals as well. That's having a heart too. And without the policy in place prior to doing these things, we've now created a bad situation. Period. Now, you want to mention paying taxes in Rotterdam, I also pay taxes on my address in Schenectady, unlike you who accepted benefits you shouldn't have received. So if we want to go down that road, we can. But the reality is, people are struggling, they're doing the right thing, and we should have created a policy first. That would have prevented anything going forward in terms of unequal treatment or unethical behavior. Probably not the right word, but I'll stick with it. So here we have a situation where, yes, we have a heart for people. But we also have a heart for those individuals that I spoke about, who are paying their taxes and are struggling. This, I mean, the ARPA situation, you want to say, oh, well, you could have put things forward, we did, you just ignored them. Just like the application, the review process, we told you some things, you chose to go forward with it anyway. That's fine. But if you want to correct things, at least get it right.
Mr. Farley?
I'm not sure where to start here. Okay, so I guess we'll start talking about the ARPA funds. You know, the ARPA funds that the city has received was a response to a once-in-a-generational crisis that did impact the entire world, that's why that money showed up. When you have that type of money show up to the city, it's really important that we recognize, the money doesn't belong to City Hall. The money belongs to the people, and the effort that you saw, the unprecedented effort that you saw to engage the community in a way that hasn't happened before, was a way to be responsive to the needs of the community and include their voice in the process. And if it didn't go perfect, guess what? That's what happens when you try to be innovative and you don't allow tradition to stifle innovation when you're welcoming people into a process. I find it troubling to hear Mr. Palomani's point of view on extensions for nonprofits who apply for this funding, knowing that he was a part of the same very governing body that voted unanimously to double the price of the Central Park pool, almost to the $210 million. And we did that in good faith, understanding that during the process, prices of materials have gone up, as well as availability for those materials. So, it's important that when you give these type of statements, that you provide the appropriate context. So, if you're going to make those type of considerations and understanding for the city, then you are morally, I would say, obligated to make the same type of considerations, if not more, for those small nonprofits who are doing the very work on the ground in the community every day. I would also say, to this conversation around foreclosures, what I would say to the people that you talked about, and the lady in Hamilton Hill, and the widow in Bellevue, I would like to say, you have a body, a governing body, that not only is responsive to your needs, but takes into consideration the fact that there was just a pandemic, and that if you are in a position to now pay your taxes in full, that's the part that we need to talk about, this is not a handout, this is a hand up, which makes our city whole and keeps peoples in their house, while we heard our entire city talk to us about the housing crisis that we're facing right now. So, I would like to tell them that we listen to you, we care, and based on the information that you've given us, we're being responsive. But unfortunately, I can't say that to the theoretical person that you make up your head or the real person that is listening today. I'm not really sure how we get to a place where someone is putting together the resources to save their home in the midst of a housing crisis, and we prioritize our commitment to bad practices that will only amplify the very housing crisis that's on our hands when we don't have to. I invite you to be really clear about when you make these statements and sound like it's some fiscally irresponsible thing, when you know it's not. The city, the first thing here is that the city is made whole, and people get their home. That's called a win-win. Doesn't happen often in politics, but when it does, we really should grab a hold of it and celebrate the fact that we are being equitable, responsive to the needs of the people that live in the city. The people that live in the city, because it's their money. Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Always interesting to come to a Skynectity City Council meeting. Just on the Central Park pool, the pool costs really didn't double, it was additions to the pool that drove it up, so I think the actual pool costs were up about 30%, but community input and investment in the future brought the price tag up, and it'll be something that I think when we look back in 10 years, in 20 years, that people will say we made the right decision to make that investment. On the sampling of the creek through the GE plot, we did map out a timeline for that to be done by the end of August. High-water events dilute the effectiveness of the sampling, and so the rain this summer has slowed that process down, but the report is being compiled, put together, and again, that condition has existed for decades. We're working on it to identify where the sources are coming into that creek. They could be in the city, they could be one of our neighboring communities, but it's a slow, methodical process to track it back and then to be able to put in place a solution for that. Want to thank everyone who came out this weekend. We did the health fair around City Hall, Stockade Art Show, the Greek Fest, the Italian Fest, Councilmember De Toro, that, the Caribbean Fest, I think that was maybe the largest crowd I've seen in Central Park since I've been there. I know Mr. Motiviran spent a lot of time on that, apparently had to take tonight off to rest up from all his efforts on that, but again, it is really a great day for the community, where we get to see the strengths, we get to see the diversity, people come out, have a good time, and generally, the weather was cooperative, a little bit warm, but not as warm as it has been, and so I thank everybody who made that possible, especially the city staff in terms of supporting it, but again, it's just a good collective message for the city of Skynectity. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to echo those comments, it was a wonderful, I made almost all of them, events we had around the city, and it was just really wonderful, see all the diversity that we have within our city, and people who came to be a part of that. It was just a great, great weekend, all the different foods, and, you know, people just having a really good time, and I heard no incidents, and sometimes, you know, when there's mass crowds, you think, perhaps, but people were just enjoying themselves so much. It was wonderful to see and really wonderful to be a part of, so I congratulate all the groups that put those things together, because they clearly took a lot of work. So, thank you for that. I just wanted to just remind folks that this council operates by majority rule, so anything that passes, as though, sometimes it's presented as though Madam President did that, it takes the majority of people on the council to move these things forward, we have discussions, we move them forward, or as you saw tonight, sometimes things don't move forward. So, this is a group decision that we make. And to Mr. Kennedy's point, if you have a person who has a concern, please have them give their concerns directly to City Hall, I appreciate you bringing that here, but we can't operate on hearsay, so if that person would like to make that complaint, certainly ask them to do that, so we could look into it. And also, in terms of people that, in terms of council members and people saying that, you know, they have different needs, we all, or most of us, know about the different programs that are out there, so when someone comes to you, I encourage you to say, if you're in need of food, there's this program to help, or that program to help, so that we can make sure that we direct them to that. We know that we have a lot of needs in our city, which is why we also have those programs in our city, which is also why we fund those programs in our city. So, I encourage people to do that, I know that people have needs, and the reason that these particular properties came to our attention is because, not because they're our friends or our donors or all the other things that are said, but there are people that came to us that said, this is my situation. So, I just, you know, want people to understand that we are a council that listens and addresses issues, and there are people who would want you to believe otherwise, but one thing I can say about us is we come up with solutions and not just problems. So, I thank you again all for coming, and with that, entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Farley, all in favor? We are adjourned, have a good night.